My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother. All right, yes. So, I want my day on. My parents. Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents. Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother. All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
All right, yes. So, I want my day on.
My parents.
Yes, I have a mother.
I do think, and I want to challenge our new Chair Lady and the Board of Commissioners, all those that are in Henry County, that we have an opportunity to turn around the trust that has been given to you all to be first-servant leaders, to serve the people who elected you. When I started pastoring at Shoal Creek and Locust Grove in 1986, you could come down seventy-five in five minutes. You could go down one fifty-five in ten minutes. But it's not like that anymore. It is a growing county. It is an exciting county, and I've enjoyed living in Henry County. And so I just challenge you to remember that being in government, it means compromise. It means seeing the big picture. It means that where there are people that did love to divide, you would be the bridge builder, not the wall builder. How tragic it is for someone to be campaigning in our county this last weekend and to be beaten up. That is not the way we act. That is not the way that we want Henry County to be known. And so I charge you and I admonish you that you bring the blacks and the whites, the Republicans, and the Democrats, the have and the have-nots, that you see the big picture, because just as you serve, you will be blessed. Dear God, we are grateful and thankful for the glorious opportunity that we have today to stand and to witness history being made in Henry County. It is exciting, oh God, that even despite the pandemic, despite the crises that's in our country and in our state and our nation, and in this county, we still trust you, and we lean not to our own understanding. And we pray, oh God, that as we celebrate tonight, that we'll make the main thing the main thing. In the name of our Christ, we pray. Amen. Would you kindly stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Every chain has a weak link. All right. Why don't you go ahead and hold this? I was not asked here to speak. I was asked here to provide the oath of office. There are two oaths that she has to take. But before I do that, I do want to say this. I have known this lady and this family for a long time. They are a fantastic group of people. If you don't know them, and I mean all of them, including him, I want to encourage you over these next few years to get to know them. You will be blessed. They are just truly good people. Honest, hard-working people that care about our county, everybody in our county, and want to do the right thing. And that's why she ran. So many times politicians run just to have a title or to get to stand up here and do this. I can promise you that this is her least favorite part of the job. She wants to work. That's why she ran. So with that, we've got to do two oaths. So why don't you put your hand on the Bible? And we'll go through both of these. All right. If you'll raise your right hand, please, ma'am. I instate your name.
I, Carlotta Harrell.
Do swear or affirm that I will well and truly discharge the duties of Commissioner for Henry County in all matters which require my official action to the best of my knowledge and skill, and I will so act in my judgment will be most conducive to the welfare and best interests of the entire county. I have been a resident thereof for the time required by the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia. I do further solemnly swear that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States or any other state or any foreign state which I am prohibited from holding by the laws of the State of Georgia, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution of the United States and according to the laws of the State of Georgia, and that I will support the constitutions of the United States and of this state. So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, we're halfway there. One more. I instate your name.
I, Carlotta Harrell.
A citizen of Henry County and now being an employee of Henry County and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such an employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Georgia. So help me God.
So help me God.
You're it.
Well, good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Ms. Carlotta Harrell, on your new embarkment to be officially the Chair of Henry County Commission. This young lady has been working tirelessly in the community throughout the years. And this is no surprise that finally God has allowed her the opportunity to serve in an official capacity. So this is nothing new for her. The work is not new for her. Maybe just the title, but she's always had the heart to serve. She's always had the heart to lead. She's always had the heart to support others. So today is her day to be officially congratulated. And I want to say that I am here to support you as a state senator, although I do not represent Henry County. I do represent millions of Georgians, and that includes Henry County. I think Senator Jones will share just a little bit of that with me. And I am here to be of a strong support and to continue to uplift the community, whether it's Henry or DeKalb or wherever. I want to continue to support and uplift our community so that Georgia can be a better place to live. And I congratulate you, my sister, and I strongly support you. And thank you to her family, who is now my family, for always supporting her. So again, congratulations.
I am deeply honored and privileged to be here, and I certainly pray that all of you are as well. We need to give her a round of applause. Now, I really mean that we need to give her a round of applause. It's okay to stand up. Those of us that have lived in this county for many, many years, like myself, some twenty-nine years, we've waited a long time for this moment. I am extremely excited to be here and be part of this historic moment. And Pastor, I'm glad that you've blessed us with your invocation, because I know the heart of this woman. I've known our county Chair Lady for many, many years, and I've seen the work that she's done in the community. I've been beside her on many, many occasions, and sometimes those of us that seek elected office, and I see several other elected officials out there, know that you don't always win on your first time. But those that have truly dedicated and committed to doing the work of public service with a servant's heart often will try again. And let me just say, Madam Chair, I am so glad and delighted that you saw fit to try again. I remember when you called me and you said, "What do you think?" Let me tell you, what I think is that you are now the Chair Lady of the Henry County Board of Commissioners. I was talking to a reporter today, and I hope you'll mind if I just digress for a moment from the AJC, but they shared with me, based on some national data, that there was two counties in Georgia that ranked in the top nationally in terms of the percent vote given to our now-president-elect. And I'm gonna share with you, because that story is gonna be coming out soon, that number-one county in the United States of America that had the highest percent increase of votes for our president-elect was Henry County. And just let me tell you, that would not have happened without Sharice, her family, without this lady here and her commitment to service, because I saw what you all did. And let me just tell you how excited I am. But let me also remind you, we gotta do it one more time. To our Chair Lady and to my colleague, who is that incoming Chair of our Georgia Legislative Black Caucus, I'm happy to share this moment with you, but not Henry County. Let me just say that we look forward to working with you, because it's our hope as elected officials that you will bring a new direction to this County Commission, and that, as been said earlier, that you will find a way to be inclusive rather than exclusive, that you will find a way to make every person in this county feel as if government is working for them and on their behalf. To me, that's what servant leaders do. And Chair Lady Harrell, this is my hope, and this is my prayer for you, always put those in this county first. God bless you, and God bless your service.
Good evening. First of all, to all of the, first of all, to Madam Chairwoman, to the Harris family, God bless you. To my friend and my frat brother, Mr. Harrell, God bless you. To all of the elected officials here, to all the other public servants, I greet you in this spirit of celebration for tonight. As I was driving here this evening, I was thinking how Madam Chair now has been elected to one of the highest offices in Henry County. But while she's been elected to one of the highest offices, she's been elected during one of the lowest seasons in our country and our community. Because of COVID, because of some of the economic downturn, to some of the dysfunction and some of the disunity we've seen in our country, this is truly one of the lowest times in our country. But as a Baptist preacher, as a believer in Jesus Christ, I still dare to believe that our God does his best work when we're in our lowest places. And I believe that God does his best work through his servants. And Madam Chair is, in fact, a servant. From the time that she served in law enforcement, she was a servant. From all of the different community organizations that she has worked with in WACP, she's been a servant through her church. She's been a servant. And now, because of you, because of us, because of those who came out and thought it not robbery to vote, she will now be a servant in the Chair of the Henry County Commission. Somebody ought to say amen for that. And so, I'm not gonna be long. I'm done. And so, I just want to say congratulations to her. But we now need to do our part to support her, to continue to pray for her, not just for her, for all of our elected officials, for all of those who are doing their best to make our community, our county and our country a better place. Now is the time to support and serve. And as everybody else has said, I just pray that she will continue, not only to make Henry County a better place, but to make government serve all of her people. So to God be the glory, my sister, for the great things that he will do through you. Amen.
I won't be before you long, but I did just want to bring some final closing remarks. First of all, I could not have done this without each and every one of you in this room. And you're in this room because you all had my back. When I was running for office, you all had my back through many other things that I've been through. And I really, really appreciate each and every one of you all. To my mom and dad, my father is the bishop. And so, it was my upbringing that pretty much led me to being a servant in the community. I was always taught that it is our duty and our responsibility to take care of others. And that's something that my family has always done. I'm glad to have my sister and my niece and brother-in-law here. Kenya is my best friend, my sister. She's everything to me. And, you know, I definitely could not have gotten through this journey without the support of my family. And to my daughter-in-law, Sharice, who helped run my campaign and helped me get over that hump, I just thank you for just being a part of my life and my family. To my pastor, you know, we've been through a lot. And losing my son a couple of years ago was probably one of the most devastating moments of my life. But with faith and the support of all of my pastors, because I got a lot of pastors. I'm a member of the Greater Pottery Grove Baptist Church, but Pastor Gaddis is my pastor. Bishop Strickland is my pastor. Pastor McBride is my pastor, who has been a big cheerleader and supporter of mine. And I just thank all of the clergy here in Henry County and outside of the county that have been supportive through this endeavor. And then just to my community, my NCNW sisters, National Council of Negro Women, you know, just to the different, the Divine Nine, and all of them that supported me through this. And to all of my very, very close friends and elected officials. Elton, you know, you were out there with me holding signs when I was campaigning, and I want to thank you so much for your support and all of the elected officials that have supported me through this, those that supported me financially to make sure that I was able to get through this moment. And, but not the last, but also my husband, because he put up with my foolishness all the time. It has, he, he the one, he needs a standing ovation, because he has put up with my foolishness through all of this. And, but, you know, he know, he knew that this is what, where my heart was, is to serve the citizens of Henry County. You know, I've been questioned and criticized for putting together a transition team. But to me, it's about bringing the community together. You know, I have the city manager, Alex Cohela is here from Hampton, and, you know, several of other, the Stockbridge, Lakeisha Gant is here, and, oh, Yolanda Barber is back in the back. And so, you know, at the end of the day, we have to make sure that our cities and counties are working together. You know, today I met with Dr. Mary Elizabeth Davis from the School Board, from Henry County Schools. And we had a great conversation today about how the school system and the county can work better together. And I'm looking forward to working with all of our partners, our stakeholders. Mayor Anthony Ford, thank you for your support and everything, and, you know. And then I had my other team that was with me out there campaigning all the time, Sheriff-elect Reginald Scandrick and the Clerk of Superior Court Alexa Brea Hill. We were rolling, it was the three of us all the time, rolling, campaigning, trying to do what's right for this county. And all we're asking is for your support, for your prayers, that we are able to move this county forward, that we don't have people that are trying to prohibit us from moving this county forward, because I will call them out. I will call them out if they, and I will let you all know, when I take a vote up there, I'm voting as an individual, as a person, and I'm voting for what is going to be best for the citizens of Henry County. And it has nothing to do with party, because we're all citizens of this county. And so, we're going to work together. If not, I will be calling people out, and I will let you all know, this is why I voted this way. And so I am putting everyone on notice that this is the way that this is going to be. And we're going to stop the bullying of our employees here. We're going to do what's right. And if you don't do what's right, then we will replace you. And so I am here standing before you, again, thanking everyone for your support, for your vote. And I just want the employees here at this county to know that as long as you're doing your job, I have your back. And that's the way that it should be. So, again, thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming out. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we could not, you know, have the normal reception and things that we do, you know, in this type of, for this type of ceremony. And, but, you know, do know that I am grateful for each of you all and just need you to continue to support and pray for me. Thank you so much.
Well, I'm gonna get my sermon in y'all's sitting. Just teasing you, just teasing you. Well, Chair Lady, you can have all these pastors, but you know where you can bring your tie. I want to do, I want to do a little bragging though, before, before I do the benediction. If you're ever on I-20 in Glenwood, where our church is, for over twenty years, we had a vision to build senior housing. And Carlotta serves on the Board of our 501(c)(3). And we'd gone through this company, gone through this one, got in debt, thought it wouldn't come to pass. But one day, Carlotta came in the meeting and said, "I got something that's gonna work." And I said, "Just because," and just like she did that in DeKalb County in her church, "Pass by and see what's going on with the 100 senior apartments on I-20 in Glenwood." Well, we have a 2,000 waiting list, and so I'm expecting those great things to occur here in Henry County. When my daughter was about three years old, I was helping her go to bed one night, and we both knelt down. She folded her little hands, and I didn't hear anything. So I tapped her on the shoulder and I said, "Joy, I don't hear nothing." She said, "I ain't talking to you." Let's make sure we talk to the God that we serve, that this county would be great, greater, and great. Commissioner Jones, don't forget to vote. Don't ever give a Baptist preacher a microphone. Don't forget to vote. It's critically important that we go back and vote. I leave it at that. I don't want to be partisan. Praise the Lord. God, we do thank you for this opportunity, this day that we've had to come to this place. We pray, God, your Spirit will reside in this room and this entire county as our friend, our sister, and our leader, gives us vision and direction. We do know that when one does not have vision, they have division. And so even now, we pray against division. We pray against anything that is standing in the ranks to cause us not to move forward as a people. Help us, oh God, to keep our eyes on you and be with us as we journey to our several places. In the name of our God, we pray. Amen.